And it's, I'm going to give another two or three minutes for Councilmember Zine to show up. I know he intends to be here for this, and if not, we'll start the meeting up. Councilmember Zine will be here and join us shortly. We have Councilmember Alarcon and myself, Councilmember Corretts. So we have a quorum, and if clerk could read the item.
Item one, motion, Corretts, Rosendale-Zine, relative to instructing the Los Angeles Fire Department to report in regard to the various personnel issues relating to its plan to staff 11 additional basic life support ambulances by redeploying firefighters from 22 light-force companies with said report to include consideration of meet and confer questions that have arisen pursuant to the Los Angeles City Employee Relations Ordinance and the Myers-Millias-Brown Act. This item has also been referred to the Public Safety Committee.
All right, if we could have a report from the Fire Department?
Good morning, Councilman. Chief Deputy Darren Palacios, Councilman Alarcon. As you were president of Budget and Finance, and Councilman Alarcon was not, on Tuesday, the Fire Chief is planning on this Sunday implementing 11 ambulances. Currently, we have 11 fire stations that have only a light force as the sole fire suppression resource. With 84 percent of our workload being EMS, these 11 light-forces are busy responding to the EMS calls and are not available for the physical rescues, the structure fires, the other type of calls. These 11 new BLS rescues will provide better service delivery model through increase in those resource availabilities, so those BLS rescues will run those medical calls, and those light-forces will be available for the physical rescues and structure fires. It will reduce response times and provide for improved patient and transportation capability. I notice in the motion, we talked about in haste, currently those 11 rescues that are identified are in the fire stations, equipped, ready to go. We have a few issues in regard to telephones and things like that we're working through. We hope to have them in place. The dispatching will be in place by Sunday for implementation. As the chief stated, also in terms of firefighter safety, it's his number-one concern always, and what we have is we've operated safely with five members in the past. We currently operate with five members on the light force. When staffing shortages occur, training shortage of things of that nature, so this is not new. We do it now. We have training bulletins, and we've put those back out to have our people go back over those things, so we ensure firefighter safety, firefighter accountability, company unity. In terms of meeting with labor, the Fire Chief early on sat down with both President UFLAC, President COA, and discussed his plan for this augmentation. And since that time, we've had meetings with both UFLAC and COA to talk about the practical consequences or effects bargaining of these augmentation plans. The Fire Chief will be furnishing a robust report to the Fire Commission on May 21st, you know, addressing his objectives, benchmarks, and everything in that report. As you've said before, the Fire Chief's concern is continuing to be public safety. He's going to, you know, continue to pursue increased funding for these LAFD resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, if you or the chief want to answer this question, but there's some that say you didn't really discuss the deployment plan with your employees because you didn't include them in the development of the program, and you didn't really give them an opportunity to suggest changes to it. Would you respond to that?
What I would say is that the chief has an open line of communications. There's always ways of recommending deployment improvements. The chief did, has always announced that we are an EMS agency, 84 percent of what we do. We're always looking for ways to better serve the public. The chief, when you turn, talk about talking, he's messaged this plan. He's sent videos out to the field. He's incorporated some of that ideas. We've asked UFLAC to bring back on these meet and confer, practical consequences, effects, things that they think we could do better, a different plan. No one's presented anything to the chief. He's moving forward to implement this. No one's come up with a better idea to do that.
And is it your understanding that this is a management right, and that you have the right to implement this without meet and confer, or even meet and consult to have a real dialogue on the issue?
I will defer to our, we did obtain a city attorney opinion. I'll defer to the city attorney, Janice Barquist.
It's meet, it is not mandatory bargaining. There is no necessity to bargain over the decisions that have been reached.
And I think at the end of this hearing, we'll go into closed session and talk to you about what your reasoning and authorities are on that issue.
If you wish.
Was it your intent to engage in any kind of impact bargaining with UFLAC on this issue before the May 5th implementation?
Yes, we've had, we've had three meetings with UFLAC, including one yesterday, and in that time, we tried to talk to them about their people's right back to the assignments, you know, transfers, all of those things, and we had no agreements. We asked them if they wanted any TAs, trying to get things to go, and they would not agree to any of that because they felt that they wanted to, they said they'd get back to us next week. We've been meeting at least three, we met at least three times with them.
Mr. Alarcon, questions, comments?
On the truck companies, is it safer to have three firefighters or two?
Is it safer to have three or two?
Yes.
I would say if you're trying to accomplish a certain task, it would be safer to have three than two. I wouldn't say safer. I would say your risk increases when you reduce the number of people.
So increased risk would mean it's less safe?
Yes.
So we're making it less safe on our truck companies?
We're, I wouldn't say, well, we're asking our people to no longer try and do too many jobs. We're asking them to operate as a single company. With six people, they may be trying to accomplish too many tasks. We're trying to get, we've now said that when you operate with five members, the years of task you do, you either do ventilation, or you do fire attack. You don't do both. We're putting procedures in place and standard operating guidelines to prevent that, any risk or increased risk.
What is the national standard for truck company?
The NFPA standard is four people. If you...
Four people or four firefighters?
Four people. Four, four members. They don't distinguish firefighters.
Okay, who would they be?
On, on, it could be, you would have a driver.
Driver?
You have various. You have a driver, a supervisor, and normally two firefighters. So you'd have a, and for us, it would be an apparatus operator, a captain, and two firefighters. Would, for any, say, the NFPA for the whole nation.
And the apparatus operator, when they're not driving, what are they doing?
They basically, they do the maintenance on the apparatus. At an emergency incident, they normally will either ventilate, or they're kind of the supervisor of the crew in the absence of the captain, or augment them. He's a little more technical expert. It's a civil service class. It's a promotion. People study, and they go from firefighter apparatus operator, a little more responsibility.
Right. And then they go, so there's an incident, the apparatus operator is providing ventilation? When you say ventilation, what does that mean?
Ventilation at a fire, when people, when they're going inside with the hose line, the heat and smoke to make it more tenable inside.
They poke a hole in the roof?
They poke a hole in the roof. He's, a lot of times, the apparatus operator would be...
Who's pumping the water?
Pardon me?
Who's pumping the water?
Who's pumping the water?
Yeah. Somebody has to pump the water, right?
Correct.
So you have the two firefighters going in, the one on the roof. Who's pumping the water?
Oh, you wouldn't do all three. You wouldn't, you wouldn't, you would, either they're going to, all five go to the roof, or all five go into a fire attack, and another company will do ventilation. We don't split our companies that way because we always work on the partner system. So if we're going to do ventilation, all five members of the light force would be able to...
So it assumes that two companies are responding?
Yes.
And what if only one company responds?
On a structure fire, we have many companies. We actually have about, on an A assignment, we send 29 members. So you're always going to get various apparatus on structure fires or larger calls.
Okay, the, if, if, in the contract, maybe this should be directed to the city attorney, in the contract with firefighters, is there any language that speaks to diminution of safety that, that would require a meet and confer? Diminution of safety for the firefighter that would require a meet and confer?
That would require a meet and confer? I'm not aware of such language. Are you aware of such? No, we're not aware of such language. But if it's in the contract...
Is there, is there language in the Myers-Millias-Brown Act that requires that concern, that consideration?
If, the issue of safety has to do with impacts, and they're doing impacts...
That's not my question. My question is related to the Myers-Millias-Brown Act?
I don't...
And whether or not that, that's a national, national requirement. Whether or not the Myers-Millias-Brown Act requires that when employee safety is reduced, that that is a meet and confer item?
No, sir.
So there's nothing in the Myers-Millias-Brown Act that does that?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, what are the options in order to reduce the reduction of safety on these truck companies? What options do we have?
Councilmember Deputy Chief Dave Yamahata with the Fire Department. Just to try and clarify for you some information in terms of the staffing level, NFPA guideline states that fire companies whose primary functions are to perform the variety of services associated with truck work, which is what we're referring to, such as forcible entry, ventilation, search and rescue, aerial operations, or water delivery and rescue, utility control, illumination, overhaul, and salvage work shall be known as ladder or truck company.
Okay.
These companies shall be staffed with a minimum of four on-duty personnel. It doesn't say four firefighters, just says four on-duty personnel. It goes on further, in jurisdictions with tactical hazards, high hazard occupancies, high incident frequencies, kind of what we have here in the city.
Yeah.
Geographical restrictions or other pertinent factors as identified by the authority having jurisdictions, these companies shall be staffed with a minimum of five or six on-duty personnel. In our, in this current reconfiguration, what we're looking at is we'll be staffing our truck companies with high personnel.
So you're suggesting a captain's going to go poke holes in the roof?
That's their job. Trust management.
How many times has that happened in the last year?
I couldn't tell you, but I was captain for 11 years, and I can tell you I did poke holes.
How often?
Every time I went up on a roof.
How often's that?
Depends on how many structure fires you go to. In my 11 years as a captain, I would say I went to probably 100 structure fires.
So when a captain goes on the roof, who's supervising?
Well, normally, the captain is a supervisor. There are times when...
When they're on the roof, can they supervise?
Yes.
And how do they do that when they're poking holes? I, this is getting ludicrous. I mean, I just can't imagine a captain being able to supervise a fire scene and poking holes in a roof.
What an officer does when they get up on the roof is they have a team working with them. Normally, it's the apparatus operator that is the lead in terms of ventilation. They'll usually have a chainsaw, or their ax, if it requires manual opening and so forth, as well as individuals bring rubbish hooks to pull back.
So if somebody's operating a chainsaw, they're going to be directing how to pump the water, and, and make sure where everybody is in the building?
I think you're combining two tasks when they should only be doing one.
But that's all, that's all one truck company. The truck company's got to pump the water. They gotta...
No, I think, again, you're confusing two tasks. When, under our current policy, when a life force, which is a truck company and a pumper, respond to an incident, when they get on scene, they're given a task to either do truck work or to do engine work. Meaning if they're doing truck work, they're not utilizing that pumper, so they're using their personnel to do truck work. If they arrive on scene first, and they need to initiate a fire attack using the pumper to put water on a structure fire, then they will staff the engine company and not utilize the truck.
Okay, then let me ask a question this way. All these years, we apparently have had this extra person that we didn't need?
No.
Well, why did we have, for all these years, why did we have this extra person?
That's, I think, again, you're, to try and clarify for you, on our, like, current configuration with six members, and with this augmentation plan, you will continue to have certain truck companies with six members. Each member has a specific duty.
But not these 22?
No. When you lose that one member, what's going to happen is that you have to, that specific job...
But I just want to talk about those 22. We're going to lose one member. So all these years, we've had these people with six, and now we're going to five. So I'm wondering, what was the justification for having six in the first place?
Again, when you look at the tasks that are required at an incident, each individual has a specific task that's associated with their position, where they're riding. When they respond to an incident, if you do not have that individual, then that task has to be assigned to another individual that arrives on scene. So they may not be on the same resource. They will have to be coming from another company and be assigned that task.
Okay. You don't have to be a firefighter to know that if the city has operated with six personnel on 20, on these 22 truck companies, that there was a good reason for it. It must, if there wasn't a good reason, then you're going to have to explain why we wasted all that money. So I'm assuming there was good reason, and I'm assuming that reason is founded in safety and saving lives. I've got to assume that. Otherwise, all these expenditures, millions and billions of dollars over the years have been wasted. And then it begs the question, what about the other truck companies? Why, why are they still at six? And these, you know, unless we're wasting more money. But I have to believe it's founded in safety. As you said, if you have fewer people on trucks, it's less safe. So I don't want to lose the people on trucks. I lost 500 homes in the Sayre Fire, and I would hate to think I'm going to lose 600 the next time we get a fire like that. We've got 10,000 acres burning just to the north of us, and they're saying it may come down to Malibu. I don't understand, you know, when we talk about 85 percent of the calls being ambulance-related, I get that, and I have no problem with that. But one fire can affect thousands of people. And so I'm not exactly clear about the justification here, and I'm concerned about the consultation. I do want to hear from our firefighters when you talk about a dramatic change in plans like this. And to hear that, that they weren't consulted prior to the announcement that this change was coming. Also unprecedented, the Chief Officers Association and the firefighters agree and have protested. I, I've never seen that in my years, and maybe I missed it, but maybe it happens every once in a while, but that's, that's highly unusual for both to agree on this. I know in your heart of hearts, you don't want to lose any of these positions. I won't ask you to say that, but I know it's true. And, and I just think that we cannot, we cannot undermine safety to take care of our budget. So we shouldn't even be having this discussion. We need these positions. We need the ambulances, too. So, Mr. Chair, I, I just want to figure out where we're going to get the money to, to fund these positions, but I would also beg the Fire Department, the chief in particular, to not implement this on the Cinco de Mayo. And give us a chance to work through this budget to get these additional positions, rather than cutting fire resources, which are going to be less safe for those 22 companies. Not only is it going to be, you know, I, you know, I have enough firefighters historically in my family to know that when, when a fire goes on, you never know who's going to have to move into what position. But it's always nice, I remember when we, when we eliminated the ninth man, I think it was, ninth person on the truck way back when.
10th person.
10th person. Well, we made it nine. And that was the backup person. I don't think we have that position anymore.
This is actually the...
This is the same thing.
To re-eliminate them.
This is the same thing.
Yeah, we had it, we had that person eliminated for almost seven years, and then they brought him back in 2006 or so, and so we've had him back for a few years.
The rationale for bringing him back?
What's that?
The rationale for bringing him back?
efficiencies and safety, and more people, you're able to accomplish more things.
Yeah, I know you guys don't like being here at this particular time, but, and I wish we weren't here. So the, what we really should be discussing is how much is it going to cost for us to make this program whole with the 11 ambulances and avoiding the transfer of these people off the trucks? So I'm trying, I was trying to get to the bottom of that, and if we did it by overtime, has there been any calculations of what that would cost?
9.7 million for the, for...
Just for the overtime?
For the fiscal year.
I thought the 9.7 included equipment.
No, that's, 9.7 is for their salary for a year plus overtime.
No, that's for new positions? Is that for new positions, or just overtime?
That, if you had, yeah, that's, if you wanted to fill those 66 positions, 9.7 million.
Could we fill them with overtime?
Time and a half?
Just overtime. Not new hiring, which takes a long time.
I think that's about what the figure is for overtime.
We'd have to come back on that. I'm not sure exactly how much that would be, just strictly hiring overtime rather than adding new positions.
Is that for the coming fiscal year, or is that for the remainder of this fiscal year?
Balance of the fiscal year would be about 1.3 million, but for the entire year, for those 66 positions, about 9.7. If you put permanent, it's going to be more because you have indirect cost of pension and benefits.
Can't we cover this year with overtime, and then...
We don't have the 1.3 million.
Well, I know, I know. But the idea would be to get you the 1.3, and I'd be ready to move that in a, in a second, to find the 1.3. Do we have it in the reserve fund? Sharon? The reserve fund is 200 million, and we're, we're making the people of Los Angeles less safe? That's ridiculous. Doesn't make any sense at all. Mr. Chair, I would, I would, I would like to see us transfer 1.3 million to allow them to provide overtime to fill these positions temporarily until we go through the budget process, and seek to get the full complement to the department. You know, I hate these discussions.
Well, I would second it and agree with you, although ultimately, that's not the subject of this particular meeting. So...
Well, I think it is the subject.
I think, I think we can move it, and I think that's the solution. We had a similar issue with animal services, where an equally questionable proposal was brought forward in terms of safety, and we recognized that the right thing to do was actually fund a department that's too close to the bone, you know, a little more fully. So I, I hope we can, we can take that on, and I would assume, since you've made that motion, we will pass that without objection. But with the half hour we have left, I think we also should...
I saw move.
You have moved, I have seconded it, and, and it has passed without objection.
Councilmembers, that motion, actually, any transfer from the reserve fund in accordance with council policy would actually require to go to the Budget and Finance Committee first.
Of course. And we'll, we'll discuss it there.
Yes, you can amend your motion here to actually make that transfer or recommend the transfer, but that motion would normally be referred then to the Budget and Finance Committee for their consideration.
And then, let's move on to the...
But the point of that is, having made the motion, again, to request that the chief stall on the implementation of, of that plan, because that would give us the opportunity to try and figure this out differently.
All right, let's take members of the public, or in essence, UFLAC, and have them up to the table. Since we only have two chairs, I'll just take the speakers in order, but we will dispense with the usual two-minute time limit and just have a conversation on this. Start with Mike McCosker, to be followed by Tony Gamboa.
If you don't mind us just going out of order here.
Hey, if you want to flip it, that's fine.
Good morning. Tony Gamboa, First Vice President, UFLAC. We can actually work this out. Increasing the number of BLS ambulances is not only possible, but it's desirable. We want it to. But not at the expense of lives and safety of firefighters we represent. Our job, our responsibility, is to protect our people, your people. This is not a plan. It's an experiment. As presently written, it's dangerous. It puts us below the nationally-recognized standard for safe staffing on 22 companies. And because it involves safety and workload issues, the department is required to bargain on the decision as well as the consequences. Mr. Chairman, members, we're asking you to help us stop the Fire Chief from doing this prematurely and unsafely, and before completing the one process, the only process, that can ensure the safety of firefighters and the public, meeting and conferring with the firefighters themselves, the people who we are going to actually put into action, whatever plan is agreed upon.
Thank you. Mr. McCosker?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Member Alarcon as well. I didn't have any prepared remarks. I was, I was up here to offer some clarification, really. The department has misrepresented the status of negotiations. They have been meeting in a very cursory manner with us on the impacts. We've notified them both orally and in writing of their obligation to meet over the decision itself. They've refused. But, and they haven't completed either process, so it's irrelevant that, for them to just come in here and say that they're engaging us in impact bargaining. We haven't got even, first of all, they haven't done it seriously, and secondly, they haven't completed that part of it. Example is, one of the very few things they, they proposed to us in the impact stage, which is insufficient as far as we're concerned, is a right of return for people displaced. We've already, we've indicated orally to them that we'd accept that, and we are scheduled to meet on Tuesday. But, but our questions to them as to how they were going to account for the, for the safety of the people involved on these 22 companies, how they were going to alter operations, and ask them to put that in writing, have been refused. And, and they're relatively polite, but they're refusing to engage us in this decision at all, and they haven't completed the process.
So what, what would a completed process look like for this?
Well, we would either reach agreement, or we wouldn't. And if we didn't, there's an impact procedure. It's well, it's well laid out in Employee Relations Ordinance. And it's, and it's designed to, to push the parties towards an ultimate agreement prior to implementation.
Do you have a difference of opinion on the issue of the Myers-Millias-Brown Act?
I believe, yes, and... I, I believe, yes, and, and, and only have it on advice, that inasmuch as this plan substantially affects the safety of our members and their workloads, it is subject, it is mandatorily subject to bargaining under Myers-Millies-Brown and its interpretations.
And you have your legal counsel here?
We have a good one, too.
Oh, sorry. So we'll, we'll ask her further questions in a moment. Don Fraser first, and then, then Dana Martinez.
Council members, Don Fraser for the Chief Officers Association, thank you for this opportunity. First, I'd like to talk a little bit about the meeting and confer process that the department has engaged the Chief Officers Association with. We met two times with the department on April 23rd and April 30th, and at each session, we noted that there is no plan to actually discuss. Yesterday, the department published a, a plan, and, and so we have some concerns from this plan. Number one is the plan does not compensate for the fewer firefighters that are being dispatched as a result of reducing the staffing on the, on the life force. The plan claims that they're putting 11 new basic life support ambulances to fire stations, and yet when I look at the plan, every piece of apparatus that they are assigning is either at the very end of its life cycle or is beyond life cycle. And then the, the final point on this plan is that half of the short-staffed life, life forces are perimeter companies, which means it takes the longest amount of time to get additional help to those companies. We think that it would be very thoughtful to have engaged the Chief Officers Association on the plan design to help compensate for that layout of, of resources. I want to make it clear, chief officers support the idea of adding additional rescue ambulances. We need more rescue ambulances, but we should not do it at the expense of the firefighting forces that have already been cut extremely short in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Dana Martinez?
Thank you. Council members, I am Dana Martinez, I am counsel for UFLAC, and I'm here today to discuss with you the bargaining obligation relevant to the chief's plan. On April 17th, UFLAC made a demand to bargain to the chief. To date, the chief has failed and refused to meet in good faith and bargain over the decision relevant to the plan. As I gather that you're familiar with, the controlling law here is the Myers-Millies-Brown Act and the city ERO. Both require mandatory bargaining when you discuss wages, hours, and terms and conditions of employment. Now, issues, bargaining issues are categorized into two different groups. The first is mandatory subjects of bargaining. So when an employer wants to introduce a new policy or new rule that touches on a mandatory subject of bargaining, then the employer is required to bargain over the decision itself before implementation, and bargain fully and through impasse if that's what it takes. Now, there's also the other group, which are permissive subjects of bargaining. When an employer wants to change a policy or rule that relates to a permissible subject of bargaining, then the only bargaining obligation is to bargain over the impacts of the decision, but the employer is not required to bargain over the decision itself. Here, the chief's plan touches on two very clear mandatory subjects of bargaining, which means that the chief has a duty to bargain over the decision. Those two mandatory subjects of bargaining are safety and workload issues. What the plan does, as I know you're very familiar with, is we'll remove one personnel firefighter from the truck. Right now, as you were discussing earlier with the earlier panel members, that person is performing a function, that person is performing work duties. That person being removed will leave the work duties. Those work duties need to be absorbed by the remaining personnel. That is a workload issue, that is a mandatory subject of bargaining. Also, as we've already heard, and probably doesn't need much explanation, is there will be safety issues. The risk will go up, as we already heard. Safety is a mandatory subject of bargaining. Now, the, I'm, the chief has taken the position that there are broad, fundamental managerial rights under the charter to be able to do this unilaterally, but that's not what we're dealing with here. The cases have dealt with the sort of broad rights as the chief has put forward, and they're different, and there is no bargaining obligation for those types of managerial rights, but that's not what we're dealing with here. So by way of example, a managerial right that an employer can engage in without bargaining would be, in this case, sort of something that touches upon general firefighting policy. So if the chief decided that the city of LA should only have 100 trucks or 50 trucks, that is a, a fundamental management right. However, once you get on the truck and start talking about personnel matters that touch on workforce and safety, that takes it out of the managerial prerogative and puts it right into mandatory bargaining. Now, this, this issue has been addressed by the courts, the courts in California, the Supreme Court of California. There is a case, the Firefighters Union versus the City of Viejo, Viejo, has addressed a very similar issue. In that case, the court found very clearly that the employer wanted to reduce staffing on trucks, so the city wanted to reduce, just like what's happening here. And the city took the position that that issue was not subject to bargaining. And what the court did was analyze the charter in relation to the MMV and found that because the personnel reduction touched on safety and workload, it should be considered a mandatory subject of bargaining. That's exactly what we have here. I understand also that there's been talk about impasse bargaining. Now, UFLAC's position is very clear, that this is a, there is a duty to bargain over the decision here, but just to address the issue of impasse bargaining, even assuming that impasse bargaining was the only obligation that was here, the chief is still not permitted under law to implement this plan on May 5th, because impasse bargaining has not gone through fruition. You've heard that it's just begun. There's, there's, we're in the beginning process, and the, to complete the obligation, you must go fully through and go through impasse procedures if needed. There are very limited circumstances that would allow an employer like the city to cut prematurely impact bargaining and implement, and none of the elements that are required to do that exist in this case. So to conclude, again, it is UFLAC's position that there is a duty to bargain over the decision. UFLAC also, for the reasons stated in the motion before you today, UFLAC would like this plan to be tabled until a written report can be published and fully vetted.
Mr. Haller-Cohen, any questions? I think, I thank you for your, your testimony. I'd like to ask that we go into closed session and get the city attorney's side of this, this issue. Any reason why we wouldn't be able to have more, more than one staff member from council members here? Ask the city clerk to publicly state the motion that we have voted on in closed session.
Okay, the closed session, the committee recommends requesting city attorney to report council in regard to applicable case, case law and related in connection with the matter at hand.
Very good. So that has, has been voted on and passed unanimously?
We're going to do this at city council.
We're going to have a closed session, city council, to discuss the legal issues at hand.
There was another motion, my motion.
Which was?
Additionally, you want to transfer 1.3 billion dollars from the reserve fund to cover operating costs, I believe, and that would also have to go to the Budget and Finance Committee.
And that was already passed publicly, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Well, we've passed it already, okay.
Actually.
Okay. Okay, so those are our two motions that have passed, and we are adjourned. Very good.